What'd I say? Excuse me. You're on TV. Good evening, everyone. We've been waiting for the jet to finish flying over, but I think it's gonna be a little while. Those of you in attendance tonight know what I'm talking about. Welcome to, all of you, to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, September 24th, 2003, at the Marvin Browdy Constituent Service Center here in Van Nuys, in the heart of the San Fernando Valley. I want to begin by apologizing and asking for your understanding. This is the first day in the last several months that we've heard this kind of noise here, so it's a little unexpected. We're trying to do something about that. Hopefully with the audio equipment, you can follow this evening's proceedings and understand what we're talking about up here. Let me, first of all, introduce the people here up on stage, beginning to my right, the staff that makes the city council meetings possible. Our council clerk, Maria Kostrencic; our vote clerk, Anna Martinez; our assistant city attorney, Dion O'Connell; and the members of the city council, beginning to your left and my right on the first level, council member Dennis Zine, standing up, causing trouble; council member Antonio Villarrealosa; council member Bernard Parks; council member Cindy Masakowski; council member Martin Ludlow; on the second level, to my far left and your right, council member Janice Hahn. Let's give her a second round of applause. She has the longest drive this evening, driving all the way from San Pedro. Council member Eric Garcetti; your council member, Tony Carvadas; and council member Tom Labange has rejoined us. Welcome, Tom. And allow me to introduce myself. My name is Alex Pidi, and I'll be presiding over the majority of this evening's meeting. Let me begin with some formalities and some announcements. To all of you here in person, copies of this evening's agenda are available. They are in the back along with council district contact information. I also want to make a special announcement of translation equipment. If there are Spanish speakers in the audience especially, there is translation equipment, so you can follow this evening's proceedings live. So please check in with the city staff in the back and help yourself to all that information. The council will consider the items listed on this evening's agenda in numerical order, as they are listed. Some of the items may be approved without discussion. We call that "on consent." However, any item may be removed from consent calendars by any member of the city council requesting it to be called "special." If an item is called "special," it will be held on the desk and brought up for discussion one by one after the remainder of the consent items on the agenda have been acted upon by the council. Members of the public who wish to speak on any items are requested to complete a speaker card for each item they wish to address and present the completed cards to the sergeant-at-arms. Speaker cards are also available in the back of the seating. The council will provide an opportunity for the public to speak on public interest items not appearing on today's agenda. General public comment and testimony shall be limited to consent to content of matters within the city's jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. When debate on an item is completed, I will instruct the clerk to take an oral roll-call vote. That's because we don't have our computers with us. We travel, but the computers don't. So we'll be voting orally, and the clerk will take the vote in alphabetical order. Every member of the council present must vote for or against each item. There are no abstentions, and the clerk will announce the results of each vote on each item. For this evening's meeting, council members requesting to address the council, please raise your hand. Again, we don't have our computer system with us, so requests to speak should be done through eye contact or waving at me, and I'll do my best to recognize you in the order requested. When recognized by me, please use the microphone in front of you and speak loud enough for the members of the public to hear you and understand you. And before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, we do have some special ceremonies and introductions to be made. I'm gonna turn it over at this point in time to the council member of the sixth council district, council member Tony Carvadas.
Thank you very much, Council President Padilla. I want to first thank the community of Van Nuys and the San Fernando Valley for coming out today for this important meeting of the LA City Council, as it is our first meeting outside of City Hall of the year and the first of many to come. We understand and hear loud and clear in City Hall that we need to be in the communities at every opportunity. And as you can see, today on the agenda, we have many issues to cover, yet at the same time, as you can see over here at the podium, there'll be an opportunity for everyone who wishes to speak and address the council and to bring issues to the attention of your friends and neighbors. That opportunity will be available to you, as it is always in our public council meetings. I also want to thank my colleagues for coming out tonight and braving the hot San Fernando Valley weather. It's really interesting. This is the first cool night we've probably had all summer, but I'm sure it's gonna work out just fine. And also, we apologize for the background noise coming from our neighboring building, but as you can see, as you look around you, this is a wonderful place, a civic center in the middle of the San Fernando Valley, in the heart of the San Fernando Valley. And the city of Los Angeles is very proud to be a part of this civic center with our beautiful Marvin Browdy Constituent Service Center, that I've talked to many people tonight who are very pleased with the service that is being rendered here and the attention that we're giving our San Fernando Valley residents out of this wonderful facility. And if you look over to my left and your right, we have the original San Fernando Valley City Hall that's being renovated, and we'll be talking about that a little bit later. I don't want to be too wordy and too lengthy, but I'd just like to say once again, thank you all very much for coming tonight and being a part of this important meeting. And once again, we're here to serve all of you and to listen and learn from every single one of you. At this moment in time, I thought maybe we were gonna get a little lucky. At this moment in time, we'll be receiving a presentation of the colors and a salute to the flag by the John H. Francis Polytechnic High School ROTC. Please stand. At this time, I'd like to introduce once again the Van Nuys marching band to play two songs for us.
Thank you very much.
Victory bound, drum.
Thank you very much for that wonderful rendition. At this time, we'd like to welcome one of our San Fernando Valley colleagues, Wendy Gruhl, who just arrived. Wendy, Councilmember Gruhl. At this time, we'd like to have a video presentation highlighting the Marvin Browdy Constituent Center. It'll be a couple of minutes of a presentation. Are we ready? It should be appearing on the monitors.
Welcome to the Sixth Council District, home of the San Fernando Valley Government Center, where you will find agencies from federal, state, county, and local government. Here at the Government Center, you will find the new City of Los Angeles Marvin Browdy San Fernando Valley Constituent Service Center, your one-stop station for all your city needs just minutes away from your home. This new building, located in the heart of the San Fernando Valley, meets all your needs for doing business in L.A. Now, there is no need to deal with going to downtown. At the Browdy Center, you can meet with almost any city department right in Van Nuys. On the first floor of the Browdy Center, you will find the Department of Finance, the mayor's office, and your councilman Tony Cardenas's office. On the second floor, you will find the Construction Service Center, a true one-stop station for building needs. On the third floor, you will find the Department of Transportation, Department of Public Works, and the Department of City Planning. And on the fourth floor, you will find the Los Angeles Fire Department, the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Street Services, and Bureau of Contract Administration, and the City Attorney Civil Liability Division. So if you need any assistance with the city department, please stop by and let the Office of Sixth District Councilman Tony Cardenas help you, or call us at 818-778-4999.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move to some presentations to some very, very important individuals and organizations that have served us very, very well over the years. And we're going to move to the microphone over here to my right, to your left. Before we go to these two presentations, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the wonderful people and organizations who helped to make this evening so successful. First of all, we'd like to thank people in progress who fed over a thousand people tonight. In addition to that, once again, the Van Nuys High School Marching Band, the Poly High School ROTC, our city clerk, the Chief Legislative Analyst Office, General Services, Department of Transportation, and the many community organizations that provided services tonight, manning the tables. And also, I'd like to give a special thank you to all of the staff, especially my staff from Council District Six, who've worked day and night to make sure that this evening went off like clockwork. And other than the background noise, it seems like everything is going wonderfully. So thank you all very much. In addition to that, I'd like to thank my wife, Norma, for getting the kids to do their homework on time and were able to come tonight and enjoy this evening together with us all. Thank you, Norma. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to honor and introduce to all of you and to thank a wonderful, wonderful human being, a public servant here in the city of Los Angeles, and someone who works tirelessly and without question puts the city first, as you'll know in a few seconds what I'm talking about. Someone who is shorthanded with the budget crunches that we're in right now, someone who works tirelessly and without complaint whatsoever, someone that many of us see night after night, morning after morning, day after day, putting together our wonderful events throughout this wonderful city of Los Angeles, and that is Eric Robles. And I'll read this certificate of appreciation and heartfelt thanks and hereby presented to Eric Robles. On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, it is with great pleasure that I commend you for your outstanding dedication to organizing events for this city. Your commitment and endless efforts to make every special event a success are truly admirable. Thank you for making every event, large or small, a true success. This September 24, 2003. And I mentioned earlier, Eric Robles puts the city first and he puts his heart and soul into everything that he does, and we are blessed to have him. But someone who's even more blessed to share his life with him is someone who is sharing her anniversary with him tonight here with all of us is his wife. Would you please come up and join us? Please, once again, help me in thanking Eric Robles and also reminding him that please, go enjoy your evening with your wife, please. There are many, many wonderful organizations who serve our community very, very well. I was, it was my pleasure and also I was inspired when I met this organization called Shane's Inspiration, who have done wonderful, wonderful things and who were inspired by what somebody might call a tragedy, but for good people who know how to move past situations and put things in their heart and their mind and their soul in the right perspective. They have created Shane's Inspiration to make sure that what some people see as tragedy, they are making sure that it's opportunities to the most needy of our communities and that are children with disabilities. Shane's Inspiration is dedicated to making sure that throughout the city of Los Angeles and California, now throughout the United States, they are experts in making sure that our parks and our facilities are available to all children with all disabilities, and they're making sure that their research has improved and they have become the premier organization across the country. And I was so inspired by them that before I left the legislature, one of my last acts was to make sure that we garnered nine and a half million dollars, which no matter what the budget process is in Sacramento, that money is coming to the city of Los Angeles so that we can expand our, we've only had one, now two, parks of that kind throughout the city. And with that nine and a half million dollars, we are guaranteed to have one of those parks in each one of the 15 council districts. So with that, I'd like the representative of Shane's Inspiration to please come up so we can present you with this certificate. This certificate of appreciation is hereby presented to Shane's Inspiration for your hard work, dedication, and commitment to providing playgrounds to children of all abilities. Your universally accessible playgrounds allow children with disabilities to play independently with their peers. Your efforts help make so many lives brighter and happier. This September 24, 2003, on behalf of the City Council of Los Angeles, thank you so much for all of your wonderful, wonderful work.
We just want to say quickly how grateful we are to Councilmember Cardenas for his extraordinary vision of bringing these most important play environments to children of all abilities. They allow able-bodied children for the first time to know a child with a disability, and that will change the community for everyone. And we also want to take this time to say thank you to all of the council members who have so generously from the beginning supported this effort through the allocation of land and funding and also a bus transportation program that's transported over 2,000 children this last year with disabilities to play at the two playgrounds that are open. And those children would have never had that opportunity without this council. So thank you so much, council members. We are so appreciative.
We just want to also say that we're honored to be able to serve the city and to help the council serve you as well, and we're here. Thank you.
Now, Council President Padilla and Wendy Gruhl, we're going to make a special presentation to a person who's been doing wonderful work in our corner of the world.
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. Colleagues and members of the public, it is indeed my pleasure, although I do have mixed emotions about this, to present the following resolution to Gary Bond. Gary, get up here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you know Gary Bond, I need to say no more. You know what I'm talking about. But for those of you who haven't been blessed yet to get to know Gary Bond, let me introduce him briefly. Gary has been working for the city for the last 35 years in the Department of Recreation and Parks. He's a hero here out in the northeast San Fernando Valley. Before he began with the city, he started as a volunteer and as a recreation assistant in Eagle Rock. His first formal job with the city was in Silver Lake, but he soon made his way through 14 recreation centers throughout the city of Los Angeles and ended up where we needed him the most, overseeing the Hanson Dam Sports Center complex, which covers more than 1,400 acres. 1,400 acres, probably the most valuable piece of the Wreckin' Park system, maybe a second to Griffith Park, Councilmember LeBonde, maybe a second to Griffith Park. And indeed, over at Hanson Dam, he's overseeing baseball programs, soccer programs, equestrian programs, the San Fernando Valley Fair, our annual Fourth of July event, Snow Day that we celebrate every year. It has convened a committee and a cross-section of all stakeholders, from residents to users of the park, the surrounding equestrian community, homeowners groups, all to make sure that the community has a significant say in what happens at Hanson Dam and through the Department of Recreation and Parks in the northeast San Fernando Valley. For all the tremendous work that Gary has been able to do over the last 35 years and all the times we called upon him to go above and beyond the call of duty, we do have the city resolution in appreciation of Gary's work and all you've done for us. Congratulations, Gary.
I want to echo the comments by Council President Alex Padilla about Gary, and I have told him in the past that he retired too soon, and I'm sure you feel the same way too, Tony. We just get in office and Gary retires. One of the best Recreation and Parks directors and someone who has dedicated his life to the city and to Recreation and Parks. And I think I see some family members over here to the right, very, looks like your son, who is very proud and probably wife that's next to him, he's been shaking his head as Alex was making the comments. But so many people work tirelessly every day, don't get thanked enough for their dedication and commitment. Gary was there, remember Gary, it was probably a month or so ago, we saw you on a weekend. We were going around Hanson Dam with some of the equestrians and there was Gary driving around, making sure everything was taken care of. So know that you will be missed in the city of Los Angeles. Thank your family for sharing him with us, because I know he's been a dedicated employee and you'd be very proud of him. If only every employee could be just like Gary. So congratulations. Enjoy your retirement and we look forward to seeing you come visit us again. Thank you.
I just want to echo what my colleagues have said about Gary. When I served in the state legislature for six years, Hanson Dam was part of my district. Even though I wasn't a city employee, even though I wasn't a city representative, Gary made me feel at home and he worked with us in a tremendous, smooth, smooth fashion. He's a professional. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank his family for sharing him with us for 35 years, week in and week out. And I'd just like to say once again, our most precious resource in this country, what makes this country great, is our people. Gary, you're a shining example of what makes this country so great. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
So kind, so kind. Thank you, Tony, Alex, and Wendy. It's a great pleasure to serve the city of Los Angeles for 35 years. My most enjoyable waning years have been over at Hanson Dam. It's been truly a challenge. It's been truly a blessing to work with not only these people, but the community. I want to thank them for giving me the support and giving me the opportunity to work with them. They are truly, truly great people, and I just wish in the coming days, Hanson Dam will be even greater with all the new things coming in. I'd like to thank my department for giving me the opportunity, especially our general manager, Kevin Reagan, who gave me the opportunity to get things going in Hanson Dam. It's taken a lot of effort, but I want to thank the community first and for effort. There are a lot of people I'd like to thank, and it would take me a long time, but again, thank you for this great honor. Thank you for this body for recognizing me, and I truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody.
Congratulations. You get them back. That concludes our informal part of our evening tonight. And once again, I'd just like to say that we've recognized some beautiful, wonderful, wonderful people tonight, and Los Angeles is blessed to have these wonderful people serving us. And once again, thank you all for coming tonight. And now we get to our formal part of our meeting tonight. Council President, we're ready.
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. As he said, we do have some business to tend to this evening. For those of you who this is your first time attending a council meeting, you're about to see us in action. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruhl, Han, LeBonde, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarigosa, Weiss, Line, Padilla, 13 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Cardenas moves and Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves and Mr. Villarigosa seconds.
Before beginning regular agenda, there are several items that are requested to be continued. Item number one, the applicant requests a continuance to July 21, 2004.
Colleagues, we have a request to continue item number one to July 21, 2004. Seeing no objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item number two, a request to continue that applicant consents to a continuous to September 30.
Request to continue item number two, members. Also without objection. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number three, and that's a special presentation by the L.A. U.S.D.
Let's hold that on the desk as we go through and dispense with consent items.
Items four through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held, and I understand there's a request. Item number 10, Mr. Villarigosa needs to recuse himself on that matter.
Mr. Villarigosa?
President, I'd like to identify item number 10 as special.
Okay, we'll call item 10 special for the purposes of allowing Mr. Villarigosa to recuse himself on this item. Colleagues, items four through 19 are currently before us, matters which have had public hearings. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing no such motion, do we have any specials? Mr. Parks? 19 calls special by Mr. Parks. 19, call special by Mr. Parks. Ms. Misakowski? 18, call special by Ms. Misakowski.
11.
Item five and item six are both presentations for the community. We'll call those items special as well.
11.
Item 11, call special by Ms. Han. Any other specials? Any other specials? I have called special item five, six, 10, 11, 18, and 19. Mr. Ludlow? 17? 17, call special by Mr. Ludlow. Any other specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, LeBonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Villarigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
13 eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 20 through 30, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection. Items 20 through 30 will be considered by the City Council this evening. We do have cards on item number 20. Let's call that item special. On the balance of the items, 21 through 30, we do not have requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall therefore deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call items special, 21 through 30?
30, please, Mr. President.
30, call special by Mr. Garcetti. Any other specials? Items 21 through 29 still before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 21 through 29.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, LeBonge, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Villarigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
13 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And that will go back to the items called special. Item number five was called special for a presentation on the neighborhood.
We also have item number three held on the desk for a presentation. Any announcements before we go to the matters before us? Item 20 has been called special. We do have cards from the public. Mr. Cardenas, you want to make a brief announcement and introduce item number three?
Yes. Before I introduce item number three, thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank some very hard-working folks who have been here for two days, making sure that you can hear everything we're saying. Once again, they can't control everything, but I think they've done a wonderful, wonderful job, and that's our information technology folks, otherwise known as ITA. Thank you so much for all your hard and good work. At this time, we'd like to give an opportunity to the LA Unified School District to provide a status report on Phase Two of the new facilities constructions that are going on in the San Fernando Valley. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Gritzner, Special Assistant to the Superintendent Romer at LAUSD. We want to thank Councilman Cardenas for inviting us here today to give you an update on our Phase Two construction program, and really, our construction program overall. When I got here and I heard the noise next door, I got worried that it was one of our projects, except that if it was, we probably could have had the guys here to call him over and get it stopped, so maybe that happened. Anyway, we're very excited about our construction program. As most of you know, I think, we are, for the first time in anybody's memory, building schools at a rapid clip around the entire region for kids that desperately need it. I was really glad to see our great band from Van Nuys High and the ROTC troop from Poly High here today, and these are the kids who are in overcrowded conditions, who attend schools on shortened calendars, who have to take buses to and from school every day. And the guys that we're going to introduce you here today are working very, very hard to get that construction program on track. It is on track. We've got something like 52 projects under construction right now, today, throughout the city, and we're doing those projects on time, on budget, in a really great way. So, I'm not the guy you want to hear from. I'm just going to kick it off. And so, who we have with us today is Jim McConnell, our Chief Facilities Executive, who runs the entire program, and we have Guy Mahula, our Deputy Chief Executive, who is in charge of our new construction program. So, without further ado, let me just hand it over to Jim, who's going to provide you an overview of our construction program today.
Good evening, and thank you. It's wonderful to be here tonight. I was with council two years ago, for the first time, to brief you on our very early days of this construction program, and it's good to be back two years later to update you. Those of us involved in the school construction program truly believe that we're involved in a social imperative. LAUSD needs to build 200,000 seats in the next 10 years, and we consider that a matter of crisis proportion. Superintendent Romer reminds me that 200,000 new school seats is the equivalent of three new Denver school districts, and that's the challenge ahead of us in the next 10 years. Let me talk to you about the 200,000 seats. We have that condition for two reasons. One, we haven't built schools with any meaningful intent for decades, really, in this city. We've built one in two schools a year, but the student population has grown at a rate of 10,000 students a year during that time. We today have 330,000 of our 750,000 students on an abbreviated school year, 160 days as opposed to 180 days because of school overcrowding. Additionally, every day, 16,000 kids get bused out of their neighborhood necessarily because there simply isn't enough room in their neighborhood for them to go to school. That, ladies and gentlemen, is the crisis that these good people have come to work hard on, on your behalf. Let me tell you, to build schools takes really four things: money, a good team, the support of the community, and...land. And that's a tough one. Let me talk to you about money, because Councilmember Cardenas, I want to thank you specifically for, along with your colleague, Councilmember Villarigosa, when you were in the Assembly, for the first time, making sure that state money came to the areas of greatest need. And because of that, we today have $5.2 billion in our hands with which to build 120,000 of these school seats right now. The money is the big hurdle. Thanks to you and the taxpayers of LA and Van Nuys and the Valley and across the state of California, that money is ours, and we want to thank you for that. But two and a half years ago, they said, "You'll never build schools because you can't get the land." We need 440 acres to build the first 80 schools in this program, $800 million worth of land. Two years ago, they said it was impossible. Today, I stand before you to tell you that we have 96% of the land we need for these schools in our possession today. Of the 1,600 entities that occupy that land, 1,500, over 1,500, have been relocated as of today. That, ladies and gentlemen, clears the way, money, land, to build schools. But you need something else. You need an expert team. You need a professional team. And frankly, to put it gently and mildly, we haven't always had that at LAUSD. We have that today. We have a team of experts, registered professional engineers, who are here working awfully hard to not only build schools, but to earn and to maintain your trust. And finally, it is that trust that we need. We need the support of the community to continue this effort. Think of it this way: the first phase will deliver 78,000 seats. The second phase would deliver 40,000 seats, 120,000 seats. If we succeed wildly, and we have every intention of doing that, we need another 80,000 seats to get every child in a neighborhood school. You need to be confident that we can do this job and that we will maintain your trust for the next 10 years so that we can accomplish it. And with those very brief comments, I'd like to introduce my deputy for new construction, Mr. Guy Mahula, to give you the details of our program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Mr. McConnell's talked about the big picture of the program. Let me bring it to a little bit more local flavor. I've got behind me some renderings of actual schools. These schools are under construction. We have six schools under construction right now in the valley as we speak. I can tell you that I was out there with one of our school board members, Mr. John Laritzen, today and toured those jobs. Happy to report, the progress is going extremely well. They're on schedule, five of them on schedule for delivery this, in calendar year '04, one on schedule for delivery in calendar year '05. We've got a groundbreaking tomorrow for another school. I have four of them being advertised, as we speak, right now, for the next ones to be awarded in the coming months. We've got a lot of work that's underway, under construction, just right out here in the valley, about $600 million worth that's going to be in the valley itself. Phase Two, those are Phase One projects that we've got, ready to go under construction, as Mr. McConnell was just talking about. Our Phase Two efforts well underway. That's those next 40,000 seats that he mentioned, the next 40 to 50 schools throughout the school district. 12,000 of those seats are here in the valley. Over the last two months, we have had a team that has been out to every high school complex here in the valley to bring the information on what that's going to be and to talk about that program. Last night, or last week, and tonight, as we speak, they're out at Sun Valley Middle School to present the options that we're looking at for, should they be elementary schools, should they be middle schools, or what in each one of those locations? And next week, they'll have another one at Monroe to discuss that. Our goal is to bring that back to you about a month from now, after we get all of the community input on what ideas ought to be, where should we, what kind of schools should we build, and show you the recommendations based on that community input of what we're going to take to the board. We really want that community involvement. I really want to make sure I emphasize that for everyone. We're spending an awful lot of time to come out and do that, and I really hope we get that involvement. Our goal then is to go back and start looking for the land. By next summer, after we identify, in the next couple of months, what projects, is to identify where those projects would go. We'll have multiple community meetings throughout that process to help decide what's the best location for each one of those schools and how we can do that. At the same time, during Phase One, we had a lot of good examples of collaborative projects and joint use, where we worked together to figure out how to joint-use government assets and make it a good community, a center of the community. We want to do that again, and we want to do it even better this time. We intended to be looking at some Prop K applications. We want to continue to work and have been working with various aspects of the city and other agencies to make sure that we're talking about how to do that. We're going to continue to do that by next summer, hopefully have the sites. We have been already approved and have state funding reserved for $903 million worth of matching funds because of the applications we've put in. We've got the Measure K dollars that the taxpayers voted for last November. When we put the actual sites to these, we have the dollars to continue to build and do the next part of this program. Look forward to doing that. Look forward to working with the community to make this a reality. Thank you.
That was obviously a very brief overview of a very complex and ambitious and successful program. I also wanted to recognize that we do have Anna Kubas from Board President Wezar's office with us today, and I believe she'll be speaking with you on something else a little later. But at this time, at the conclusion of that, we also handed out some materials so that you can really see the projects that are here in the valley, plus we handed out some things that talk a little bit more about our Phase Two program. But if there are any questions on anything that we're doing or anything you heard tonight, the guys are here to answer them, and we appreciate the time very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that important presentation. It's been a long, long time coming to see our children get new facilities in the San Fernando Valley, and I must admit, five, six years ago, when I was visiting LAUSD, when I was in the legislature, I was not very pleased with the work that was being done. I'm being frank with you. But over the last three years, and certainly over the last 18 months, it has been night and day, and the progress that you're making now, I think, is attributable to the turnover and the changes that you've made, and I look forward to this being much more successful as time goes on, and you've improved tremendously. So, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Grohl?
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. I just wanted to thank the representatives from the LA Unified School District. The school tomorrow is in my district that we're doing the groundbreaking, and appreciate it. We've been working very diligently on a couple of projects, some challenges, and it was really great. The school district sat down with us, and we were able to, I think, make some progress with our neighborhoods and work together, and want to thank all of you for your dedication. I know that you have a big task ahead of you and the number of schools that you're building. It is something that we desperately need. I've been visiting and I've shared with some of my colleagues all of my schools in my district and meeting with the principals, and we think our jobs are hard, sit down and talk to a principal about the challenges that they face and the number of kids they have at a school that was built for 400, and they now have 1,600 on a year round. So, it is never too soon for us to help you complete these projects and get those schools so we don't have that overcrowding, and we look forward to working with you and seeing you tomorrow for our big groundbreaking in our district. Thank you very much.
We next have, thank you very much, Wendy. We next have Ms. Han and...
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Again, thank you for this great presentation, and again, I'm lucky to be the chair of a standing committee in the city of Los Angeles called the Education and Neighborhood Committee, and it's been in place two years, and it's probably the first time in the history of Los Angeles that we've actually made a specific committee that deals with the schools in the city of Los Angeles. Before, we've sort of been separate jurisdictions. LA Unified did their thing, we did our thing, and didn't really meet that much, but then we felt like, you know, the constituents were the same. The children in the school district are the children in our community as well. The parents are our constituents, so we felt it was much better to try to work together. And certainly, having to build over 80 schools is going to take a real partnership with the city of Los Angeles. As you know, one of the things I am always interested in is joint-use agreements. As we're running short on land, we really want to work with the city's parks, the city's libraries, to make sure that we can enter into some joint-use agreements in these new schools. Are any of these new schools, do they incorporate any joint-use agreements?
A number of them do incorporate a number of joint-use agreements. Guy, do you want to say a couple words about that?
Yes, they do. We actually have 23 of the first-phase projects that had some sort of joint-use or collaborative between different agencies there, and as I say, we really want to continue that effort and find even more opportunities as we go into Phase Two.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han, and Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. Regarding the western San Fernando Valley, Canoga Park Elementary, which is a charter school, Canoga and Saticoy in the Third Council District, I was interested in the number of schools that have already been leased out to private schools, and the number that have been sold over the years. Is there any plan to take back some of those schools that have been leased out to private schools, some that have been sold, to return those to the school district to repurchase? And also, there's quite a controversy at the school Hughes, which was an elementary, considered to be a middle school, in the southwest valley turned into a high school. Is that in Phase Two, or this particular phase you're bringing up today?
I'll have people who can answer that question, but I just want to say briefly that into your first question, in Phase Two, we are looking at opportunities for redevelopment and other issues where we can take our existing assets or assets that we had in the past and try to maximize those so that we can minimize the amount of land that we have to take from other places. But I'll let Guy talk about Hughes and a couple of the other specific issues.
Because I understand there's a number of schools in the western San Fernando Valley that have been leased out to private schools, LA Unified School District schools, and also some have been sold over the years, which may assist in trying to get the capacity that you're looking for.
Right now, I would say that everything is on the table, and that's the processes going on with the team that's looking throughout the valley, as well as the other two teams that are looking in the central and in the south region. Any assets that we own, any assets that may be up for sale, and anything that would make sense in the areas of need or close to the areas of need, and then it's being analyzed, taken to the community. The meeting that's going on tonight at Sun Valley Middle School is doing just that. They're talking about, here are some options. The first piece we've got to decide is what should we build? Elementary schools, middle schools, K-8s, what it is that makes sense there, and then we're going to look at each one of those assets. I don't know that we're specifically targeting anything of trying to buy back a school we sold before, but if there's, if it's in an area that we need a site, we will be looking at it. We're also trying to do that in a smart manner, because we know, right behind this, we've got another bond that's going to come, and we've got another need down the road. So, we don't want to make a short-term decision that just buys one thing here that satisfies this particular bond without thinking of it in terms of the longer group.
And is the ultimate plan to reduce the number of students who are being bused from one part of the city to another part? one part of the city to another part, to bring back neighborhood schools and to do away with the year-round schools and to have the traditional school calendar returned to LA Unified?
That's the long-term goal, is every school back on a traditional two semester calendar. The interim goal for Phase Two is to eliminate that involuntary busing where those kids that Mr. McConnell mentioned are being bused out of their neighborhood every morning to a school somewhere else. That's part of our Phase Two goal as we calculate this need for this next 35,000 to 40,000 seats.
And I know this report is particular to San Fernando Valley. If you take the entire district, where would you find the greatest need?
The need for Phase Two is pretty well split up between the three regions that we've broken them into. We've got about 12,000 seats here, 12,000 seats in the Central Region, and 12,000 in the Southern Region. In the documentation we provided you, it shows the number of seats that we're looking for in each school district, and that was part of the bond that we passed. And that does vary by districts in some of, in each of the different areas based on the need to eliminate busing and create the capacity to have everybody on a 180-day calendar.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could just add two quick things to that. First of all, I think one of the important things is for everybody to know that all the information we've given you tonight is available publicly at www.laschools.org, where you can find any project, where it is, what the timeframe is, what the budget is, and that's all public, and anybody can access it anytime, and we think everybody should do that to find out. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. And in terms of the need, one of the big things that has changed is that we really are building schools where they're needed, which helps everybody, because then that reduces the busing and that reduces a lot of things. And so we're really focusing on building schools where kids live and providing neighborhood schools.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Members, I just wanted to thank the district again. There's a new high school in the East San Fernando Valley in my district that is on Violent Avenue, and cooperation was reached with our Community Redevelopment Agency, which is very focused on community building and housing and working with schools, and the Metropolitan Transit Authority on an old right-of-way and switching the right-of-way adjacent to the school. So that cooperation is there, and I just wanted to thank the district and also thank city staff from the CRA and the MTA on that. I also wanted to ask if you could explain, I read in the paper about primary schools and smaller schools, speak a little to that issue, and will we see any of that in the San Fernando Valley in this building program?
You will see a lot of that, and one of the big efforts that the superintendent is currently really focused on, here we go again, are small learning communities. And what that really is, is a way to say, for our schools that are bigger than we want them to be, and because there's going to be a long-term need to try to get them down, we want kids in those schools to feel like they're part of a smaller autonomous community where they really identify with their teachers. The teachers identify with each other. And as this goes on, you're going to be hearing more, you're going to be hearing us talking about more and more, building smaller schools, and even within the schools that have a higher student population than we'd like, we're going to organize them in such a way so that schools, kids feel like they're part of a school of 400 or 500 kids with really a team of teachers that can help build them. So that is a core instructional part that is reflected in our Facilities Division that will be the way our Phase Two schools are designed.
I also wanted to say, I think, San Fernando, San Fernando, Tony went to San Fernando, Alex went to San Fernando, Antonio went to Roosevelt, Wendy went to Grant, and anybody else go to public schools on this council? Where'd you go, Greg?
Whittier. All right, well, that's a public school outside the county. And I went to John Marshall. All I care about is getting the track finished. Can I have a report on that from Mr. McConnell?
Yes, sir. I promised as soon as I finish the 200,000 seat, I'm going to fix the track at John Marshall.
All right. All right, I'll help you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Ludlow?
Thank you, councilmember. I just wanted to take a minute, and Glenn, you're standing behind some great, great examples of wonderful architecture and just, I think, a new day in school construction. But I wanted to take a minute and just say this. Over the last couple of months, being on the council, I've had the opportunity to work with you and members of the department, the school district, on the 15 projects in my district in mid-city, in the 10th Council District. And one of the toughest challenges for all of us, and you mentioned it in terms of land use, it's not an easy discussion, it's not an easy proposition for anybody. But I really want to take a minute and just say that I think you personally are doing a phenomenal job. I have seen you in community meetings in every part of this city and every part of the school district. Government always has the difficulty of challenging ourselves to not come across as just big government, but somebody that's listening, an institution that's at the grassroots level, that's engaging at the community level. I haven't seen a greater level of community participation before, more access, more opportunity for people to have input on designs. I'm looking forward to Phase Two. That's going to be a challenge. I'm looking forward to work on the Ambassador Hotel site. I think the ideas that you all have put forward, the five different concepts are all exceptional ideas. And I just really wanted to say, it's very, commonly we get sort of banged around, it's a tough, tough job, but I want to take a moment just to say thank you for what you're doing. Keep plugging away. We're seeing progress, we're seeing examples of good schools, and I'm really looking forward to some ribbon-cutting ceremonies, because at the end of the day, I think Mr. Abel mentioned it, others, this is about children, and this is about making sure that children do not have to be bused to get a good education, that every part of this district, every part of this city and the school district are entitled to the same level of quality classrooms. Teachers need to be afforded opportunities to teach in good settings and have access to good equipment, and I think you guys are doing a great, great job. And so I just wanted to say thank you. Let's keep plugging away, let's keep working. We've got a long ways to go. And finally, with that, I know that some members of the California State Assembly right now, and I'm curious to get just sort of your feedback on that, are obviously looking at some issues relative to what we're doing at the city level with land use. And one thing in particular is trying to find ways that we can leverage more of what they want to do and how we can begin to look at housing and parks and schools, and I know other people have been mentioning that as well. When you look at areas that are as densely populated as, of my district, in the Coria Town area and the Wilshire Center, I'd hope that we could get some working groups going right now with members of the state legislature while they're here in Los Angeles, and making sure that we coordinate this at state and local level. So I know that you guys have been doing some work on that, and I don't know if, is there any new news to report on the working groups or not?
Well, we have been doing a lot of that, and it's really a site-by-site, case-by-case, wherever we can do it basis. Sometimes we can focus on a particular area of the city, sometimes a particular site. And, you know, we have a lot of different projects that kind of take that ethic and really elevate it, and they all have different news to report on a day-to-day basis, but they're all going really well. As I think Mr. Mahula said, we've got 23 joint-use projects in Phase One where there's a lot of collaborative effort going on, different things. And in terms of the way we work with the state legislature and leveraging that, that's something we're trying to do more every day. There's joint-use money at the state, there's, you know, there's Prop 40 that's looking at the parks issue and things like that, and I think there's an ongoing level of discussion with how those can really work together and be creative. We were very creative in Phase One to find money for replacement housing that the state didn't provide, so we got a lot of waivers so that we could do a very creative program with Section 8 and others where we actually put about $2 million into a fund for replacement housing that wasn't there before, and we had to work with the state and Fannie Mae and others to do that. So we're trying to be creative wherever we can. We're going to, we want to enhance that. We obviously want to work with all of your offices under your leadership to really bring those different people together. I think you are uniquely situated to be able to do that, to bring everybody to the table and say, okay, now, how do we really work together and how do we take advantage of those opportunities when they arise?
Thanks again. I really appreciate the work, and obviously we've got much, much work to do in the coming years, but I just literally want to let you know that people are saying great things out there, and it's rare that we have that kind of feedback, positive feedback, on something so massive as school construction and large land use issues. So thank you.
Thank you very much, councilman. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ludlow, and I'd like to also thank you, Mr. Gritzner. Whenever I thank you, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank your mentor and your lifelong partner, Lisa, your wife, for her leadership and making sure. You're getting sharper every day, and I'm sure she's the one that keeps you on your toes.
Don't let it go to her head.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was told that she actually wrote the speech tonight. I don't know if that's true.
She approved. She was nodding her head. Okay. So we'll note in file item number three. Okay. Our next items on the agenda, presentations on item number five and number six.
Good evening, councilmen. I'm Dick Platten from the Department of City Planning. We're very glad that tonight we're able to make a presentation to you on the community design overlay districts in Pacoima and Panorama City. And I'm assisted tonight by the Anna Vidal, who's the planner for Pacoima, and Tom Rath over here, who's the planner for Panorama City. Because the community design overlay districts for these two areas are so similar, we will consolidate our staff report and give one integrated staff report, but if you have questions on either of these two projects, we're happy to answer them afterwards. For members of the public who would like copies of these documents, we have them over here at the tables of the Neighborhood Council for Pacoima. There's the Pacoima Neighborhood Council and Panorama City. Their Neighborhood Council has a copy of the CDO, and the different documents I'll discuss tonight are available for your review, and if you'd like a copy, you can keep it. We're here tonight to ask you to take three actions. The first is to concur with the CDO guidelines that have been prepared by city planning staff in close cooperation with your staff and with a series of workshops, focus groups, and public hearings in the two respective communities. The CDOs are policy guidelines. They do not require an ordinance, but they have more authority if the council will concur with the action of the City Planning Commission. There are two ordinances, however, that we would like you to adopt tonight. The first is a boundary ordinance, and over here behind you, if the cameras can pick it up, to my left and your right, is a copy of the boundary ordinance. For Pacoima, it has a suffix called a CDO suffix, which will alert building and safety to any project that comes through in these areas. And the third ordinance, set of ordinances which we are asking you to adopt tonight are called Q conditions. These are special zoning conditions. For Pacoima, we have two Q conditions. One that will affirm the existing conditions on any parcel, and the second that will prohibit any new automobile-related uses. These two will also apply in Panorama City, along with the requirement that all projects be oriented towards Van Nuys Boulevard and have a pedestrian linkage from their front to Van Nuys Boulevard. And the fourth condition will be that any signage that you're allowed, two-square-foot of signage for any one linear front. We'd like to give you a little bit of the history of how these two documents emerged. The CDO is simply a set of architectural policies, and we've designed them to deal with a set of critical issues within each community, as well as some of the opportunities that are presented, in particular by new high schools that are being constructed in both Panorama and Pacoima. And we have some illustrations of these that should be showing up on your, on the TV monitor. In Pacoima, the community design overlay district follows on the heels of an interim control ordinance which was designed to prohibit automobile-related uses. And over here, if you can see the display in the middle, we have actual panoramic picture that illustrates the proliferation of these automobile-related uses that have appeared in Pacoima in recent years. When the CDO is adopted, the interim control ordinance will expire, but it does contain the condition that will prohibit it. And there are two areas, however, that we will have subsequent actions which are covered by the interim control ordinance and not covered by the CDO. One is San Fernando Road, and the other is Arlita. As you can, as part of the CDO, Pacoima has already had substantial public improvements, such as a public library, which you can see over here, and the Targeted Neighborhood Initiative, which is part of the, now called the Neighborhood Block Rant Program, has been able to put in a median strip, plant trees, and has also prepared, hired private consultants to prepare design guidelines for private parcels and to prepare a streetscape plan for the public areas. The benefits of the CDO and the companion streetscape plan will be that it will allow us to be able to catch up. The public improvements have come in through the TNI, and we will now be able to have design guidelines for any future projects, public or private, which will emerge in the area. In some ways, the horse is out of the barn, but we attempt to make sure that any future projects will have design coherence for any, with each other and with the architectural guidelines that have been prepared. We'll now talk about Panorama City, and we have another set of graphic displays which I guess you'll be able to see through your television monitor. In the case of Panorama City, we have the same detailed preparation process of having a series of public workshops and open houses and working closely with staff from your council districts and also several other city departments. In the case of Panorama City, we were instructed to prepare this design overlay district based on the community plan. And to give you a little history of some of the issues in Panorama City, the area had a substantial retail loss in the 80s when the big department stores, particularly the Broadway and the May Company left. However, there have been a number of new additions, and unfortunately, they have appeared prior to the adoption of the CDO and the streetscape plan. And just to remind you, and you can see them again through the pictures over here and through the map in back of me, which illustrates the tremendous amount of activity that has appeared in Panorama City during the 1990s. But the major activities that have appeared include the General Motors site, which is called The Plant. It's a campus-style shopping mall, a shopping center, not a mall. It also includes where the Broadway was, which is now called the Panorama Mall and has a Walmart and a Curacao shop, department store. It includes the Panorama Plaza, which is a former supermarket site, and the Plaza del Valle. So these three shopping centers have appeared. Unfortunately, as you can see from the illustrations, they all have fatal design flaws. They do not front onto the Boulevard. The center, the focus of their commercial activity is to the rear, away from the Boulevard, and you can see that in some cases, they actually present vast seas of parking lots to the Boulevard, or in the case of The Plant, they actually have the service entrances of the various stores facing the Boulevard. In the case of the Panorama Mall, you can see that it's a blank wall with a large cavaliered parking lot over it that has absolutely no pedestrian activity. So it's our intention to use both the CDO and the streetscape plan to try to find a design, to use design review as a way to remedy these problems that have emerged in Panorama City. The other benefit is that when we have new public projects, such as the public schools, we hope to be able to use these design documents as a way of leverage and making sure that these new public projects will be more closely integrated in terms of their landscaping and their architecture with the existing community. We'd also like to give you a word on exactly how the implementation of these documents will take place. The first is, of course, all private projects that come to the Department of Buildings and Safety will be referred to us for design review. The second, as I've mentioned, is that there will be streetscape plans that will address all of the public right-of-way areas in these two communities. The third is that there's a number of public agencies, particularly the MTA, which will be very active in this community. The Metro Rapid Line is already here, and the MTA has that. It has corridor improvement studies, and it has the calls for project, all of which will be able to fund a variety of pedestrian-oriented improvements. And we want to make sure that these documents will allow us to persuade the MTA to make sure that these projects are designed to complement and work with existing projects in the community. Other smaller projects are the Biocom Deco Street Furniture Program, which we will have the capability of reviewing now, and that project has also given us money in the Panorama City area to have a sign program, which will... which will be consistent with the streetscape plan. So that's a quick overview. You have had a detailed staff report, and this project will now be in effect as soon as, within 30 days after you adopt it tonight. And we hope to have the two companion streetscape plans completed by winter. And that concludes our staff report.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And I want to also thank the staff for their great presentation. A lot of work has gone into both the Pacoima and the Panorama City community design overlays. It's not only a lengthy process as far as the staff is concerned and the outreach to the community is concerned, but I think one of the great things that both of these CDOs have brought to light is all the work that's happening along Van Nuys Boulevard, which really cuts through so many of the communities throughout the San Fernando Valley, from, you know, Lakewood Terrace, Pacoima on the north end, through Arlita, Panorama City, through Van Nuys, south, all the way towards Sherman Oaks. You know, as they reference in the presentation, there's so many things going on that not only give each community their own distinct identity, but also serve as a continuum connecting communities to show us we're part of one great valley and one great city, whether it's the new rapid bus service along Van Nuys Boulevard to various, you know, treescape programs in various business improvement district areas, the Van Nuys Auto Row, you know, certainly the world-renowned Ventura Boulevard in the south, and the resurging, rebounding community of Pacoima on the north. Each community has a lot to offer and significant potential to improve the quality of life for the business community and the resident, the residential community as well. So that's the goal of these community design overlays. How do we codify really our vision for the future of these communities individually and collectively? And your work is going to help us achieve that. So thank you very, very much. Probably just wanted to make sure to point that out.
Thank you very much. I'd also would like to point out that a lot of work has gone into the plans thus far, and there's a lot of work to be done. For example, my staff was pointing out to me two renderings. One was a current picture of a business along Van Nuys Boulevard, which was quite tattered and not very well-kept as far as the sign goes. And we had offered to assist the owner in getting some uniformity between him and his neighbors, and he made a very disturbing comment when he saw the beautiful renderings of the possibilities and the support we're willing to help him with to improve the facade. He looked at his pic photo, and he said, "My clients like it this way," which was the current and not very attractive version of the front of the business. And the reason why I point that out is, a lot of work goes into the planning, but a heck of a lot more work goes into the real work of making sure that we work with the community and we work with the businesses to make sure that we can make these concepts come to reality and beautify our community, and quite frankly, just make the community much more pleasing and pleasant and the way it should be. And like Councilman Padilla said, this is an opportunity for us to take care of the entire corridor of the Van Nuys Boulevard throughout, that traverses the entire San Fernando Valley. Cindy Misakowski?
I too just want to commend the department and actually the community for continuing the job. The Van Nuys area was the first to do the community design overlay, Van Nuys Boulevard in Van Nuys. We then got the support of the businesses there, was starting the Van Nuys Auto Row. And we also were lucky enough to get, back in those days, something called the TNI, the Targeted Neighborhood Initiative, which gave us federal funds to start going and showing some of those businesses how their facades could be changed with nice awning, nice frontages, nice signage. And we got building owners and business owners who took advantage of that, who started to show, and I think can create a lot of those before-and-after pictures that are real today on the Boulevard. But how nice today that it was taking that first phase and being able to replicate it on up through the whole corridor. And I think it shows how the city can work well, taking a pilot project, getting it started, getting it understood, getting community and business buy-in. And then, then I think it makes a lot more sense to show it and be able to demonstrate the rest of the area how valuable a project like that can be. So congratulations to the two adjoining communities to take this all the way out to the north end of the valley, because it's, it will really create a really nice continuity from one end on the south of Ventura Boulevard all the way through. And again, we call Van Nuys the community, the heart of the valley. I think Van Nuys is the spine of the valley going north and south. In fact, Van Nuys Boulevard, so it's nice to see that continue.
Just to add for the members of the public who have not yet seen it, simply across the street from the new Browdy Center are examples of these publicly-funded facade improvements of the private businesses that the council member has just spoken of.
Thank you very much. As you can hear, we have a very vibrant and lively San Fernando Valley. So on file items five and six, we'll note and approve those items.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Villarigosa, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
13 eyes.
Miss?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Those items are approved. For those of you watching at home, wondering what the sirens are in the background, this meeting is taking place across the street from a fire station. So our hats are off to the men and women of the fire department responding to a call for service. This brings us to item number 10. Mr. Villarigosa?
Mr. President, members on item 10, I must recuse myself because I was an employee of the University of Southern California within the prior 12 months, and I understand I'm conflicted.
Okay, let's hold this item on the desk for a minute while Mr. Villarigosa leaves the meeting. Momentarily. You're coming back, right? Keep walking, you're not far enough yet. Mr. Villarigosa is temporarily out of chambers in his absence. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
12 eyes.
That item is approved. We can invite Mr. Villarigosa to rejoin us now at this time. Next item, please.
Item number 11 was called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han?
Ms. Han. Thank you very much, Mr. President, colleagues. I called this special just to make note of the fact that we are, through this motion, we are giving our support to Kids' Safety Month activities. October is Kids' Safety Month. This is second year in the, in, this is the second year that we've done this, that we've resolved to make October Kids' Safety Month. And this initiative is being driven by our own Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families. And it started out really to highlight the serious problem we were having with child abductions everywhere in Southern California. And October started out to be a month where we really worked on providing resources to the schools and helped kids understand the danger of being abducted. It's also where we began having LAPD work with the school district to fingerprint every child that is in our schools. As we know, some of the cases, the tragic cases last year, really were dependent on a set of good fingerprints, so we wanted to make sure that every family had access to that. But what it's kind of evolved into is other ways that we can make our kids safe in and around school. And one of the things that I think we all have in our districts is complaints, many times surrounding a school, with the drop-off and pickup, picking up of our children. Some of them are in extremely dangerous situations. Many parents find the parking so hazardous that many times they just stop their car and open the door and let the kid run to the school. That's very dangerous. Unfortunately, just this morning, I had a tragedy in Wilmington. A seven-year-old who was with his mother but ran out ahead of her in the street and was hit by a car. He's in the hospital tonight, so my prayers go to him and his family. But what we're doing in October is we're working with the school district and different schools to do sort of a school valet, where we're working with parents. Some neighborhood councils have got involved in this, where we actually, some students are taking responsibility to basically have the parent drive up, have someone open the door for them, get their kid out of the car, and walk them safely to the school. And we think that's a good program. We think that makes sense, and it's a good way to partner with people in a community who want to make sure that kids are safe going to and from school. This is a month that we're highlighting other safety issues with children. We should be doing these things all year round, but this is an opportunity, colleagues, for us to, for you to know what our Commission on Children, Youth, and Family are doing to keep kids safe in October. Thank you.
Any more comments, members? Okay. Open the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
12 eyes.
I ask for reconsideration of item 15? Without objection? We'll go to item 15. Item 15, I wanted to make sure that we inform the public. It's relative to a $1,000 payment reward for an incident of graffiti that occurred at the 7100 block of Van Nuys Boulevard. The city of Los Angeles has an 800 number, 800-611-CITY, and a form must be filled out and processed within 60 days of the incident, and a reward will be awarded upon conviction. And if you'll notice on item 16 as well, another $1,000 reward for an incident that occurred on Sherman Way. The reason why I mention this is because it's wonderful to see that in our great, big city, it is very personal. And when people are willing to make it personal and, and help us apprehend in situations like this, it certainly makes our city better. And believe it or not, it sends the message to the folks who are doing these things that we're not going to tolerate it anymore. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you to those individuals that were awarding, rewarding of that $1,000. And I look forward to doing this again and again and again until we get rid of graffiti in our great city. Open the roll on item 15.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
12 eyes.
Items approved. Next item.
Item number 17 was called special by Councilmember Ludlow.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, one of the great advantages of sitting next to the Chair of Public Safety is you actually get your answers to your questions immediately. But I would like to offer the Chair an opportunity just to elaborate on this item. It obviously has great potential to be a significant victory in the LAPD's efforts and, and obviously, law enforcement in a coordinated way to hopefully reduce the incident of injuries and costs and so forth associated with individuals fleeing from law enforcement during pursuits. And so if the Chair would be willing to further expand on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. A number of months ago, the, both the police chief and the police commission, and I think Councilmember Weiss as well, brought in a motion and indicated we had to come up with a review of our police pursuit, high-speed chase issues. We had had a number of accidents as the police were doing their job in pursuing some of these individuals. We've also had the problems recently of our news media really making this such a high-profile event and stopping everything and carrying them live. And as a consequence, I think there was more encouragement. But one of the things that the police department told us is that when they caught someone aside from what they were pursuing them for, that the pursuit or the catching of somebody, they're trying to evade an officer and running, was only a misdemeanor. And the police department felt it was critical and very important that we get the state legislature to change the legislation to make evading an officer in a vehicle and creating a chase situation will now be, would hopefully be a felony. So this is a recommendation from, that was supported by the Public Safety Committee and the commission and the department, where the city of Legis, the city of Los Angeles is asking Sacramento and putting our lobbyists in Sacramento up there to say that part of the city's state legislative program for next year will be to find a state legislator to carry this bill and make the difference. And then we will send our legislators up there, our legislative analysts, our police chief, to really lobby for this, because we think it's critical to give police just one more tool that when these people are caught, it's something that's a very, very serious offense, because they are seriously threatening not only our officers in pursuit, but people, our public who are on the street, carrying out their regular business, whether in their cars, whether being pedestrians. And so this was something that we had strongly recommended and I'm asking for unanimous vote.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And Mr. Ludlow, thank you for bringing this up. Ms. Misakowski is absolutely right. This motion was generated by a couple of very serious accidents that occurred within the last year. And the most, perhaps the most notable one was when a little boy, three weeks old, named Harley Medellin, lost his arm in an accident. He and his family were traveling in a very sizable SUV, and they were broadsided by someone who had decided to flee from the police. And what's interesting to note, Mr. Ludlow, is that that accident occurred fewer than two minutes after the police officers turned on their lights and initiated the pursuit. So within two minutes of that, of the, of the suspect's decision to floor it, a family's life, families' lives were changed forever. And it's important that everyone know that under California law, sometimes these cases are treated as felonies and sometimes they're not. The mere act of flight itself is a, is a wobbler, and so it can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor or as a felony, as is the situation of reckless driving. And then if it results in serious bodily injury or death, it's prosecuted as a felony. But in my view, it's a mere fortuity as to which chases end up in a tragedy and which cases end up with nothing happening. And so it's the mere act of flooring it itself, in my view, which ought to be the felony, because everything that happens after you floor it is just chance. We were very successful in getting the Assembly member, I think from exactly where we are sitting right now, Lloyd Levine, to carry this measure in Sacramento. He did carry it, and he was partially successful in changing the law. There was concern up there about this law having a fiscal impact, about it putting more people in jail, which, or prison, which is precisely the point. And hopefully, there will be further efforts.
Mr. Ludlow?
Does anybody else want to speak a first time? No?
Mr. Ludlow, proceed.
Cindy, thank you for expanding on this and Jack raised some good points. Just, it's unconscionable to see what's happened in many of these cases. Many people have watched these, unfortunately, on the news. These vehicles become weapons. Essentially, that's what these are. And the vehicles are as lethal as any assault rifle or any handgun that might be on the streets when they get into these situations. People, I think, feel for the officers who have been forced to, in some cases, back off of these pursuits because of what's happening. I'd like to commend the LA Police Department and in the way in which they've been handling many of these cases recently. Obviously, it goes without saying that we're all in support of this. I would hope we all are in support of this item, and I would ask for unanimous eye vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Thank you. Coming from experience and involved in a number of pursuits during my career, and I'm sure Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Parks also reflect on, recognize that when you have a clear message that you will go to jail, it will be a felony, your car will be confiscated, it will be taken away, it sends a very clear message. When you have the wobbler, which is the case, many people, because of the system, slip out on probation or some other category, and the judges have discretion. But when it's clearly stated, you're going to go to jail for a felony, you're going to go to state prison, and there's no option on that. And that sends a very strong sobering message. And if you start examining the statistics, you'll find that individuals who are arrested for this type of activity are traditionally involved in street racing and other illegal activity, and the recidivism continues. So once they're in state prison, and they're there for a period of time and their car's confiscated, we restore public safety for everyone. And the tragedies that occur over the years, we need to recognize our officers have to have the ability to apprehend individuals who are fleeing for a variety of reasons. We can't just have a lawless society. We can't just have a lawless society and people who flee think they're going to get away with it, but the consequences must be so severe that they'll give that a second thought and won't do it. We need to back our law enforcement officers local and statewide so they could do the job of protecting public safety. At the same time, people will think it's not worth, state prison's not worth losing my car. And this goes for the street racers and everyone else who decides to flee from the police just at will.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. And let us be reminded that we speak very loudly in the city of Los Angeles and our voice will not be drowned out. Please open the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Twelve i's.
Item passed. Next item.
Item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see Mr. McCary is here and this I thought was important. I'm sorry it didn't come up a little earlier in the evening as we were all able to enjoy as we got here and it was still light, the great plaza we're in and the great Marvin Brownie Constitution Service Center. I think it was important to let everybody here know that, that the job isn't over. And the reason we have a construction fence just at this side is because item 18 is an authorization and it already had, already had been underway to continue the underground parking that is under this building and take the old Van Nuys City Hall, seismically retrofit it. We've got a project that is totally up to about $17 million now just for that, the addition to connect this area to the Irwin Street Mall, to the police station, to the library and create it all as a public space. And I would turn it over at this time to General Services who's got pictures up there to show you a little bit more of what it will look like when it's finished. And the other nice thing about it is I believe that they're supposed to be turning the whole ground floor, or maybe it's the second floor, in the old Van Nuys City Hall into a real official indoor council chambers so that the council, when we meet here, maybe in a year or two, can meet indoors in an official council chamber and have it again be here in the heart of the valley. And I know that Mr. Cardenas is now going to be taking charge of that project and making sure that it's delivered so that he can have even better opportunities to provide services here in the valley to the folks in, in this greater community. But let me at this time ask General Services to give us a bit of an overview.
Actually, my name is Dark Niam. I'm the project manager for the Van Nuys City Hall and the plaza that belongs to the back of the Van Nuys City Hall. And General Services is going to build the retrofit of Van Nuys City Hall and the plaza itself under a combined effort between the Bureau of Engineering and General Services. Currently, what you see on my left is a rendering of the plaza. When you came earlier today, you may have noticed that the city hall itself, the tower has a red elevator, that's a construction elevator. And we, if venture inside, you'll see that we have already demolished quite a few partitions and removed asbestos in preparation to, for, for the retrofit that is coming in. And like on the left side of the, of the wing, we are already removing, starting removing the roof to, to increase it in height so we can house, so we won't be freezing like tonight. We can house the whole 370 people for a council meeting or a planning meeting even at night. And we won't be bothered by the sound of work around. What you see in the plaza over here is land has been cleared of the old buildings that were there. The, the, the plans for the new three-story underground parking structure is in plan text right in this building that you see over here. And pretty soon by next month, you'll see groundbreaking for, for, and digging for the parking structure. On top of the parking structure, you'll see the plaza being continued from here to the library. And by the way, the library that you see over here is being retrofitted right now by General Services as well. And not only are we doing the jobs here, but the county picked up and they demolished the, the old county court that is over at the corner. And we're going to have a childcare for 70 children coming up really soon. So if you, if you look at the, the plan in front. The entrance of the underground parking will be on Irwin Street over there. But there's another entrance from this building, from this two underground parking of this building that is linked to the other side of the parking through a tunnel that is right on your left. The tunnel is already in preparation. It's, it's been constructed right now. And, and you, in, in two years, in the summer of '05, you'll see all this happening. This will be done, the plaza will be done and link every government building together, the, the federal, the state, the county and the city all together.
Thank, thank you. I, I thought it was very worthwhile to have those who are remaining here see that there's still more to come to really complete this whole civic center in a really grand way and ultimately build a very large, more than 300-seat inside auditorium for city meetings, other community meetings. And I think it's going to be a great addition to this whole area.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very happy to tell you that today at the Public Works Committee meeting, that the committee passed on a motion that was introduced by Councilwoman Galanter to name the colonnade area here in the middle of the government center, Brownie Center, after Marvin Brownie, or, excuse me, after Ernani Bernardi, the great councilman who served the 7th District for over 30 years. And that'll be coming to council in a very short time. But we're going to recognize Mr. Bernardi for his great service by recommending this area be named in his honor. And so I'd like the council to know that he's coming to council in the next week or so. And also just for the staff working here, I want you to know that as I've spoken through the district in recent weeks, when I've mentioned the fact that we are building a city council chamber here in the San Fernando Valley so that the city council can meet on a regular basis here, it has been extremely warmly received here in the San Fernando Valley wherever, wherever I've talked about it. So people are very excited about the fact that their government will meet here in the valley on a regular basis and they'll be able to be a part of it in a warm structure instead of outside.
Okay. Mr. Zine.
And for the representatives, the new city council chamber they're going to have here in Van Nuys, are they going to have it equipped so we can televise live as we do from downtown? Will that component be included in the new facility? Are the renovated facility?
The background, everything, the, the power and the flood and everything and also the controls are going to be there. We did not have the money to do it, just like city hall, just like the council chamber at city hall where we have televised, right in situ. We'll have the mobile television just like here, but all the plugging, the sound, everything and the lights are in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We certainly look forward to having the city council meetings indoors in our community of Van Nuys. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Cindy Misakowski for your leadership and your service to the community of Van Nuys that really moved this project forward and makes people like myself, job much, much easier when you laid the foundation so well. And it's moving like clockwork. And when we had the ribbon cutting just a few months ago, I looked over to the developer and I said, "Are you going to bring this under budget and on time?" And he nodded his head, so let's hold him to it. So with that, please open the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Twelve i's.
Measure passes. Next item.
Item number 19 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since I call that special, I've talked to Mr. McCary and found that most of my questions were answered. This report was done in the year 2000. General Services has made significant progress in dealing with issues of surplus property. So I'd ask that we note and file this report, but I'd also move that we ask General Services to report back to us in 30 days with a update as to what they've accomplished since the November 2000 report.
We'll note and file that item. I'm sorry. Please open the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Twelve i's.
Measure passes. Next item.
Item number 20 called special and as much as there is card from the public.
We have two members of the public who would like to speak on this item. I'm having a hard time reading this name, Mr. Don Schultz. And could we have Mr. Charles Bright? Britt?
Britt.
Brink.
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 Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Thank you, my councilman. Don Schultz, speaking as a stakeholder here in the community of Van Nuys. Welcome, councilmembers, to our community and to Cindy's house. This is an item, obviously, that we can all support, but councilmembers, I know there's some denial amongst a number of you that the neighborhood council is working throughout the city of Los Angeles. Let me just say, it is not working throughout the city of Los Angeles. There are a number of neighborhood councils here in the San Fernando Valley that are having serious problems. The problems stem from the lack of involvement by Dunn and some stem from the involvement by Dunn. Bonk is not helping us and we need leadership from this city council in the future if this program is ever going to work, especially here in the San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Brink.
Thank you. I echo his comments about Dunn. In fact, Dunn is causing the destruction of neighborhood councils. There should be a full-scale investigation of Dunn because Dunn is overstepping its authority in the charter. The charter specifically stated the councils will be run by the community, elected by the community and operated by the community. And the enabling ordinance that your prior council signed said that there should be totally independent of the city in one of the cases where the council and the government should have absolutely no control of its membership of them. I'm calling for you to do a full-scale investigation of Dunn for its meddling in the affairs of councils, for its decision-making and its audacity to say who can represent a community. I was one of the persons told I wasn't entitled to represent Northridge. And our city councilman made a great joke today. He said, "I was the Northridge council in exile," which I think is a pretty good point. But right now, they've got to be investigated. They will by single-handedly lead to a revolt in the community that will bring back the secession word. Because if we don't have authority on councils to deal with our community, then we're going to have to do it by a different mechanism. The West Hills Council is a particularly great example. It was certified two years ago almost. And Dunn has the audacity to send a letter to them that says, "Even though we certified your bylaws, we are prohibiting you from holding an election under your bylaws. If you are gutsy enough to go forward and hold an election, we will withhold all money, we withhold support and we won't recognize your council." Now, if that's a way to have neighborhood participation, then I think secession should have won. But instead, go back, audit these people and fire the leader of Dunn today and make him prove he is not violating the charter and the city ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Thank you, Mr. Brink. Councilman Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Cardenas. And thank you for those public comments as well. In a, in a related issue, I think one of the things that Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, well, there's two things I've been hearing from my neighborhood councils. One, very clearly is that we have to be able to know how to spend out the money the city is giving us. You can't create a self-fulfilling prophecy that if you can't spend it out, see, the neighborhood councils don't even need this much money. I think that's been resolved by changing the cash cards that were out there. And I want to thank the department for that work because it was making it very difficult for neighborhood councils to actually spend what we are budgeting every year. And that's their money. That's your money to be able to spend the community's money. The second issue is I know a lot of neighborhood councils, I've gotten a lot of correspondence from my own neighborhood council in Echo Park, Greater Echo Park, Alesian Neighborhood Council, about accepting donations to supplement things if they held a bake sale, if they fundraised in their area. And I know Janice Hahn has been a great leader on this issue and it's going to be important for the department to work closely with her committee to make sure that that moves forward too, so that we can simply take some of the ordinances that we have for other departments. I know the police and the fire department are allowed to take donations in, but we have to create a mechanism for our, our local neighborhood councils. If you are a neighborhood association, you had a bake sale, you're able to keep the money. Right now, we have no mechanism for our neighborhood councils to do the same exact thing. And that seems to be a very basic thing, especially when there's businesses and individuals who would like to supplement the activities of our neighborhood councils too. And I think a lot of us hear those frustrations out there in the city and we really need to make sure not only that we empower this level of where neighborhood councils are at, but take them to the next level. So whether it's land use or whether it's the budgeting process, and I'm glad the mayor has included the neighborhood councils in this year's budget process. It's a great move by the mayor. And I know that many neighborhood councils are organizing in order to say, "These are our priorities." And not just have the council, not just have the mayor's office and others decide what happens with the budget, but let the communities decide what happens with a city budget of, you know, over $4 billion. So those are critically important first steps, but we hear that frustration out there. I think we're in communication with a number of those neighborhood councils every single day. And the department has moved well on helping spend the money out, but those next, those next steps are critical ones that these are not just going to be some sort of flim-flam level of government, but ones that are truly empowered and ones that actually have decision-making power in our communities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Ludlow. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. And actually, before I go into this item, I just want to say, Tony, you're doing a great job of chairing this meeting tonight. The whole night has been a great night. You're doing a great job as a chair tonight. Yes, give him a round of applause, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow.
I want to also echo Councilmember Garcetti's acknowledgement of Janice Hahn's support and the work that she's done and her committee has done. But on a monthly basis, I meet with the neighborhood council presidents in my district. And I don't know if Mr. Nelson is here or Staffer here. I don't know if anybody has come. Has anybody from staff come tonight? Nobody's here. Somebody is coming tonight. Okay. Can you give us some indication as to, I mean, I, I am hearing just from within my own district, within the elected presidents, discrepancies in the, the way in which people are getting funds. I understand some people are still operating with checkbooks, some people are operating with the debit cards, some people are, I've heard about three different scenarios and I don't see that addressed in this report. And I just wanted to have you elaborate a little bit on both what Councilmember Garcetti is saying and the question that both of the public speakers asked.
Please state your name and title.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Claudia Dunn. I'm the Assistant General Manager of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. With respect to the, I think, you should have received a report that was distributed prior to this meeting. It was a brief summary with some bullets.
Yeah. But it doesn't, and I'm sorry, I know you're going to answer, but it doesn't speak to some of these questions about different systems that are set up.
Okay. First of all, each neighborhood council adopts a by, a set of bylaws when they're certified and some of their bylaws are a little bit different in their structure with respect to having a budget committee or those sorts of things. But every neighborhood council does have a treasurer and as far as, part of the funding program, they're required to go through a training with our department in order to receive their, their allocations. And basically, when they receive their allocation, they are given the allocation of $12,500 quarterly, which equals $50,000 annually. And they submit with their, their request for an allocation, they submit a board motion from their neighborhood council indicating a work program and how they're going to expend their, their monies over the quarter. Part of the way they can spend their money is through, one, a stored value card which is currently in place. And most neighborhood councils are using that to, to spend and, and spend for their neighborhood councils up to $1,000. Anything above $1,000, we've worked out with the city controller, a process whereby they can be the vendor that they would like to spend money for, for example, a neighborhood project or, not a project necessarily right now, but a, let's say a festival or something related to a festival, a service. Anything above $1,000, the city controller cuts a check, an expedited check. There is currently no process in place for a neighborhood council to have its own checking account, although we are working with the city controller and the city treasurer and city attorney to streamline those processes because it is a little bit difficult with respect to... to streamline those processes because it is a little bit difficult with respect to, for example, the donations matter that Councilmember Garcetti raised. The city attorney is working with us on a donation ordinance so the neighborhood councils can receive donations, for example. So there's a number of issues that are pending related to that part of the program, but actually, there are some very clear instructions that are given to each neighborhood council as they are going through the training. And then our staff, which just has recently got hired, was recently hired only in the last month to support the program and audit the program, is actually in place right now. And we actually haven't had very many complaints in the last month related to the process in place.
If neighborhood council treasurer is having problems right now, should they come to Dunn or should they go to the controller? Should they start with you first?
Absolutely. We encourage them to come to us. And we work with the controller if there are some issues. Actually, I was meant to preface this by saying the city controller indicated they were going to be here tonight to handle this report as well, but they were unable to make it today.
And then just the final point, and I'm hoping that all the neighborhood council presidents are listening tonight, and I know Guy Lemus in particular has raised this issue with Mr. Nelson. He wasn't satisfied with the answer, which is the same answer you just gave, so I don't know what's happening there, but obviously, we've got to figure out a way to get to the bottom of it. I do have a concern about city staff being involved in the election process and the way in which the appearance of engagement in the boundaries, the engagement and the appearance of some involvement around the elections of board members. And I would just, I would ask perhaps Councilmember Han or others who are passionate about this issue, that we might look at some potential rules that might prohibit city employees who are in somewhat sensitive departments, obviously, staff to council members, staff to elected officials, ranking staff for general managers or executive staff, that there be some sort of cooling-off period in terms of maybe when they leave employment with the city of L.A., or roles that they can play in this process while they're engaged in their work with the city of L.A. Because this is a fundamental issue about the way we continue to govern Los Angeles. There are huge land issues, zoning issues, I mean, just everything imaginable. EIDC, this is a big issue with permitting right now. And I just want to make sure that this city is doing everything that we can to remove even the appearance of impropriety and engagement by staff who are in critical positions in the city of L.A. from having any influence over the way in which these boundaries are set and the way in which the outcome of these elections result in. And so I'm hoping that we can do something about that.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Ms. Han? Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, I'm, I was going to call this item special, but we had speakers on this, so it called, so it made it an item that we could discuss tonight. And members, I introduced this motion because I also meet with my neighborhood councils on a regular basis. I not only go to my neighborhood council meetings, I also meet with the elected presidents of my neighborhood councils on a regular basis. We have dinner together, and I just sit there and I listen to their complaints and I listen to their frustrations. And this motion came because the neighborhood councils were having an extremely difficult time using their stored value cards. They would, they would go to these stores and it would be denied. And anybody that's ever had their ATM card denied, it's embarrassing, it's frustrating, and it wasn't how the program was supposed to work. So when I introduced this motion, the city controller, the treasurer, Dunn, the mayor's office got together and tried to work out some of these kinks. One of the problems was that each store has their own code, so that we literally have to unblock individual codes for individual merchants. So it was only when the cards were being denied that we were able to kind of go back in and find out what the code in that particular store was so that we could unblock it on the stored value card. It was very complicated, but clearly, the way it was working was not empowering neighborhood councils. And you're right, I mean, there's a lot of frustrations out there. And the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, we call it Dunn all the time, and if you remember what it stands for, that department really exists to empower neighborhoods. And anything else that happens, to the contrary, is wrong. And any obstacles they put in the way, any, you know, anything that makes it more difficult for neighborhoods to be empowered really is not the true mission of that department. That department was created in 1999 with our new city charter. It's the first time we've created an apartment in the city in a long time and gave it one mission, that was to empower neighborhoods. Clearly, I don't even think we were ready in the city to have as many neighborhood councils as came online. We've got almost 75 at this point. It's really a phenomenon in the city that we actually can organize neighborhoods all over the city, but we clearly have some issues and have some problems. We're finding that we've got problems with elections, as Dr. Weisman knows, and I hear many of these complaints on our Education Neighborhood Committee. We've got to continue to try to make sure that neighborhood councils don't get caught up in election disputes, that neighborhood councils don't get caught up in being able to spend the money that they're entitled to, that neighborhood councils don't get caught up in really rules and regulations that don't help them achieve their end, which is weighing in on the decisions that we make, colleagues. Neighborhood councils are supposed to have a voice, a loud, unencumbered voice in government. And anything that's happening right now that prevents them from doing that is just wrong. And I am committed, and I know that we do have staff members in Dunn who are also committed to that. We have to just keep working to get to the end, and that's to give neighborhood by neighborhood by neighborhood a loud, unencumbered, unified voice for their community to weigh in on the decisions that we make on the city council. We are working, we are trying to continue to get neighborhood councils to tell us what's wrong, tell us what you're frustrated about, tell us what doesn't work, and we're committed on trying to make this system one of the most powerful systems that any city in the country has. So, but I appreciate this report on the status of the funding program. We still have a lot more kinks to work out until neighborhoods can truly be empowered.
Thank you, Ms. Han, Mr. Labange.
I second this motion and I second everything Janice just said because I don't want to prolong the meeting. I think she was right on many points. I just also want to encourage anyone, whatever their involvement is in the city, to do something to improve and make a difference. If everybody does their part, they'll make a difference, whether it's just on their block, in their neighborhood, or the neighborhood council, whatever it is, show your passion and get involved. Our job is to make it simpler for you to do that and to not have to get caught up in bureaucracy, but to be focused on what you want and to look at that long-range goal and to be able to integrate in the process of city government. That is the key. And like all of us, do meet with our constituencies and our neighborhood councils. It's very important for our departments. I would like to see more regionalism where our neighborhood councils meet as a region so they could have those shared experience. But also, I'd just like to ask the chair of the committee, would it make sense if the controller's representative is not here, because I know that's one of the big issue, that we carry this over to Friday and ask that a representative for the controller's office be here to explain their commitment to this project? I know Laura Chick has expressed that often, but I think it would be good to hear it. I want to ask Ms. Han, if we continue this till Friday and then have a representative of the controller's office there, so we clarify any of these points that people have had challenges on as it relates, would that be helpful?
Without objection.
Without objection. So I move we continue this till Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Zain.
Thank you. The charter, which I was an elected representative along with Councilmember Han, created this neighborhood council concept, and what we want to do is empower the communities. We have, now the mayor stated, the budget will be decided with input from the neighborhood council. So neighborhood councils, a throw in the towel, won't be included in the process of how we're going to establish the budget for the next fiscal year. So it's critical that neighborhood councils get involved with the budget process. West Hills, I've got six communities in the third district. West Hills was the first one in the valley to be certified. It was the first one to decide that they wanted to leave neighborhood councils. And I attended that meeting along with Councilmember Smith, and we were able to convince them to remain active. And while some of the individuals have left, that West Hills group was promised with Mr. Greg Nelson at the meeting that matters would be delivered. But the biggest concern was promises made and not fulfilled. Promises such as facilities, they do have computers, P.O. box, they can't have long-term leases more than a month. And Mr. Smith, Mr. Nelson said that those matters would all be resolved in short time and we would go back to the West Hills Neighborhood Council and let them know. But I'm pleased that during the process that evolved in my district, I had a deputy assigned to help the neighborhood councils establish themselves. And they seem to be working, but there's a lot of barricades and a lot of barriers they have to break through. It's a new process, and when we established that charter, we wanted to get these moving, and we didn't want to sit and wait years and years and years till all the bugs worked out. And we're still working out bugs. But I think one of the big problems I hear from Mr. Nelson is that he has to check with the city attorney every time he wants to make a decision. And our controller, Laura Chick, has been very receptive to the issues of doling out the dollars that have been promised, but it doesn't seem that the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment cannot do things without the city attorney's approval. And I think something has to be ironed out between the city attorney's office and Department of Neighborhood Empowerment because every time an issue comes up, I have to check with the city attorney, check with the city attorney. We should have an established set of rules. If they want an office, how they can get an office. If they want to have a P.O. box, how can they get a P.O. box? They shouldn't have to have the mail collected at their residence, which a lot of them do. The access to my office, like Councilmember Han, I meet with my neighborhood councils periodically, the presidents, and we discuss issues. But the continuing saga is promises made mainly about funding, mainly about the resources. And while there's $50,000 promised to each neighborhood council, to get that seems to be a very difficult task because it doesn't seem to meet some criteria. And once that criteria is established and generated to the neighborhood councils, those matters should be resolved, but we still haven't come to that point, in my estimation, and we still have to get to that point. But it's frustrating when we promised them through neighborhood councils they would have access, they would have dollars to do something in the community, and it's not fulfilled. That's the biggest issue that I hear and complain. The other neighborhood councils that are still in the formation process hear about the negatives, and that then turns them sour. So clearly, improvement needs to be made. I sit on the committee, Neighborhood and Schools, with Councilmember Han, and we are very enthused about making these matters, resolving these matters, and improving it for the neighborhood councils. People dedicate their time. And on the other side of the coin, we've had homeowners associations, Van Nuys Home Association, many years with Mr. and Ms. Schultz, they haven't received any money. Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, a number of homeowners associations in the city, and they've worked for many, many years without receiving any money. But when we promise some money for a specific purpose, we need to deliver that and remove the barricades, and I think will relieve a lot of the problems and a lot of the concerns that they have. I know the election process has been a concern in some of the districts. Fortunately, in the third district, we didn't have any of those issues with the election process. So if we can take that back, but I appreciate you being here, but the biggest concern we're getting, the biggest complaints we're getting, we're promising, we're not delivering. We need to set the guidelines and move forward. But it seems ridiculous that they can't sign a contract to have a P.O. box that can't be signed more than 30 days. That just doesn't work for anyone, so I'm sure you can take that back. And what was your last name?
Dunn.
I thought that was accurate. I didn't know that was facetious or that was the real one. That's appropriate, that's very appropriate. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember, just one thing I wanted to commit to the council here is that as the little brief bullets you got on the funding program, there's actually a report coming to you behind this that is very comprehensive related to the funding program. And we'll have several recommendations that we're bringing to Education and Neighborhoods to look at and help us make some, get some direction on.
And if we can disseminate that to the neighborhood councils, that would also help let them know that something's being done.
Absolutely. The second thing is...
You just have to speak loud enough.
There's also a similar report related to the acquisition of space for neighborhood councils that we're pretty close to, we've already published some guidelines that we wanted neighborhood councils to give us input on, and that report will be tied up and should be brought to the Education Neighborhoods Committee as well very shortly for their assistance in developing some decision points on that. Thirdly, at the last Education Neighborhoods Committee, there was a working group directed along with the city clerk and our department and some neighborhood council focus groups to actually work towards election procedures. And so that's well on the way they had their first meeting today. And we're moving forward in a number of these areas. It's just, you know, takes a little time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn. And also, as the council member who called this item special, I would just want to remind you, it's very important that we all speak out when we have something to say, and I want to thank the public and the councilmembers for acknowledging and bringing up these important issues and questions. And, Mr. Labange, when we're coming...
Yeah, with Ms. Dunn's remarks, if they're coming back for the report, I recommend that we receive and file and move this forward. But we'll have that report soon in Ms. Han's committee, if that's okay with Ms. Han. Thank you.
So you're not going to continue this?
Okay. With that, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Reyes, Smith, Weiss, Zain, Padilla.
Twelve eyes.
And measure passes.
Item number 30 was called special by Councilmember, excuse me, by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much. This motion, colleagues, is for the projects that we do throughout the city. A number, two different members of Congress brought to our attention that quite often we are able to do projects in a community because of cooperation among different levels of government. Maxine Waters recently came to the California Science Center down at Exposition Park and held hearings with the ranking, well, she's the ranking Democrat and with the chair of the subcommittee that looks at block grant monies nationally. And one of the things that she pointed out was quite often she drives by and sees, you know, this project brought to you by the city of Los Angeles and the appropriate council member's name, the mayor's name. But one of the things is, she said credit should be given as well to those congressional or state officials that are able to bring those funds as well. So this would simply look at the feasibility of doing this. I know Mr. Brad Sherman has brought this to our attention here in the valley as well. And certainly, in an era when we push for cooperation across governmental lines between local government and state government and federal government, I think it's only appropriate for us also to share that credit, to show government really cooperating together and showing just how many levels of government it often takes to put a community center together to do transportation improvements, et cetera. So this is an instruction that I hope you can all support tonight to look at the feasibility of the city doing that with our city signs that we see up throughout the city whenever we're making improvements. So I'd ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comment, members? Ms. Grohl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to add my support for that item, Mr. Garcetti, and we often forget that our federal legislators are out there lobbying very hard for us, ensuring that we do have federal dollars that are going to be able to provide funds for those nonprofits for some of our capital improvements. And this is a nice way to say thank you in a fairly inexpensive and easy way for us to remind our constituents that it is a partnership between not only the local, federal, and oftentimes state level as well. So I would similarly support this and ask for an I vote.
Any comments, councilmembers? Open the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zain, Padilla.
Twelve eyes.
That concludes our regularly scheduled items for this hearing. And we now go to general public comment, and I will read three names at a time. If you could please step up to the podium, Daniel Weisman, Don Schultz, and Kimberly Richards. Victoria, Jamie. With those of you who are members, stakeholders of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, either stand up or join me here. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's with great pleasure that I introduce two of our directors of Van Nuys Neighborhood Council and welcome you to Van Nuys Neighborhood. As you know, we have been working hard. We have our problems. We're going to work on them continuously and continually, whichever comes first, and we're going to get them solved. Not only are we going to solve our problems here in Van Nuys, but hopefully through this problem resolution thing which you've heard. problem resolution thing which you've heard, we're going to help our neighbors to do that too. Tomorrow morning, Mr. Cardenas, we're going to meet with your deputy and work on some of the specific problems here tomorrow evening, as I did at the last time I appeared before you last week. I'm going to invite you to a meeting on Thursday, tomorrow, and as a matter of fact, next Thursday as well. We're going to have meetings until we get it done right, but tomorrow is, again, an attempt to make a meeting. We've had serious quorum problems, we're going to have to work with the city attorney's office to solve some of the technicalities, the legalities of it, but be assured, my neighbors and I are here to do the best thing we can for our neighborhood and for our city. Thank you for joining us, thank you for being in our neighborhood. Do come back soon. Thank you very much. Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councilmembers, for coming to the Valley tonight, and thank you for listening, most of all, thank you for listening. And Tony will look forward to a long relationship with you here. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Kimberly.
Thank you, Councilmember Cardenas. My name is Kimberly Richards. I am one of the city's four representatives on the Metropolitan Transportation Authority Sector Governance Council for the Metro San Fernando Valley Service Sector. I, as the only sitting representative of the MTA other than the councilmembers who double as MTA directors, also wish to welcome you to the heart of the San Fernando Valley, and thank you for choosing the very same place to meet as the MTA Sector Governance Council chooses to, as we will one week from tonight. We hope to see the same level of public involvement in our meetings as I have seen this evening, in our meetings as in your meetings, and it gives me great pleasure to be able to serve my city as a member of that Sector Governance Council. Again, I thank you so much for coming to the Valley.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers are Candido Maris, Lisa Martelaro, and Kelly Jackson. Please speak loudly into the microphone.
Thank you, sir. We're going to have the lady speak first.
Good evening. I want to thank Councilwoman Toni Cardenas for this wonderful barbecue tonight, and also Greg Smith, and I would like to thank you for also hosting the city council session. We, as citizens and city staff, look forward to working with you this year and for the next eight years, hopefully. And basically, we would just like to thank you for your time and effort and your hospitality, Councilwoman Cardenas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kelly Jackson. I work for the Volunteer Center of Los Angeles, and I stand here today to thank the councilmembers, especially Mr. Toni Cardenas, for their support of the Van Nuys Community Court Work Crew. The purpose of the Work Crew is to provide juveniles and adults with constructive ways to restitute their misdemeanor offenses and to clean the neighborhood in the process. We pick up over 20 hefty bags of trash, and we have over 868 adults and juveniles per year participate in this program. We are using the Work Crew in Van Nuys as a model program to show how to employ court-ordered volunteers, and we're hoping to expand it even more. With your support, we are ending the revolving door cycle of crime and keeping residents encouraged about the future and the cleanliness of Van Nuys. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Now the gentleman, Mr. Maris.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Cardenas, we want to thank you as chairperson of the Knights of Columbus in Van Nuys. They've come to us and asked us what we could do for the community of Van Nuys, and I want to thank you for allowing us to participate in the cleanups and a lot of the things that are taking place in the Van Nuys area. But my heart and my soul still lives in the 12th district, and Councilwoman Greg Smith, I'm always back there, sir. You know I'll be back there tomorrow. But what I wanted to talk about was something that this council did this summer. They passed an ordinance that was dealing with the drag racing issue in the entire city. No longer do we have to wake up and read newspapers where kids are killed in cars and they're left in their vehicles because their friends feel that they'd rather leave them there and hope that the police or the fire department will take care of them. No longer do we have to drive down our streets and see kids piled into telephone poles. Mr. President, councilmembers, we can't thank you enough, and I know that Wendy Grohl was the leader on this, so Wendy, we thank you for that. Because of the drag racing ordinance, we have a safer San Fernando Valley, a safer City of Los Angeles. But I want to introduce you to a gentleman, a neighbor of mine, Matt Glock, who actually stopped the drag racing by looking, staring the drag racers down. They were going to drag, they started, they saw him staring at them, he was writing down the license plate, they stopped, they turned around, they went by him and waved. So he just wants to say something real quick.
Mr. Glock is our next speaker, by the way. Mr. Glock.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say thank you for giving us our streets back. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Grohl, for your leadership. Our next speakers are Joe Viddy, Hal Netkin, and Marty Takes. And I apologize if I say your name wrong.
No, that was fine. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming to the Valley and do something about the noise next time. Thank you. I, as you may recall, last November, a majority of the citizens of the San Fernando Valley voted for Cityhood for the Valley. Let me point out that I am the current president of Valley Vote. And despite the fact that we were outspent 10 to 1, $80 million, $8 million I should say, was raised by Cityhood opponents, primarily contributed by special interests and lobbyists as compared to the modest citizen contributions of $5 to $100 given in support of Valley independence. Valley Vote, the organization that overcame incredible obstacles in its five-year battle to get to the issue, get the issue to the ballot, continues its work today as a nonpartisan citizens lobbying organization focused on all the issues that were raised during the Cityhood campaign. Let me read now the mission statement of Valley Vote, which has been the same over all these years. Valley Vote, a diverse coalition of San Fernando Valley residents, business people, educators, community activists, and organizations, is committed to exploring and implementing programs that empower the people of the San Fernando Valley, including opportunities to improve local governance, education, and public participation on policy matters. Let me state that we are anxious to work with the city council and the mayor on programs that improve the quality of life for the citizens of the Valley. Many of the Valley Vote members, including myself, are participating in the newly formed neighborhood councils to help achieve that goal. However, the jury is still out as to how effective these advisory councils will be. We'll need more time, but there certainly appears to be strong support from this new council. Nevertheless, Valley Vote will remain a watchdog to see that promises made by City Hall are fulfilled. We will continue to shake up the bureaucracy to be sure that the citizens of the Valley are not short-changed again. Here are some of the issues that we raised during the Cityhood campaign that we are still fighting for. Number one, equal police response times for the Valley as the rest of Los Angeles. Number two, getting our fair share of federal and state grants. Number three, business tax reform, which would be good for the Valley and good for the City of Los Angeles, promoting charter schools and breaking up L.A. USD. Improving government efficiency at city and state levels. Number six, stopping the continued use of urban landfills and improving recycling of waste from schools, apartments, and businesses, so that we can get to up to 90% instead of the 50% that we're at today. Seven, stop unchecked land development and promote smart growth. And number eight, improving traffic conditions throughout Los Angeles. And number nine, campaign... They must have known I'm from Valley Vote.
No. Please just speak a little louder into the mic.
Okay.
There you go.
Nine, campaign finance reform, and that is working to reducing the influence of special interest money on our elections and our city officials. Number 10, and it's certainly not the last one, but for tonight it is, improving the cultural activities in the Valley. So let me say in conclusion that I extend an invitation to all of you at the council to come and speak at our monthly meetings. We would love to have you come out and speak to our group. Wendy Grohl already has paid us a visit, and we appreciated that, and we're expecting Greg Smith to come out and join us next. And thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to tell you about what's happening with Valley Vote today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for that invitation.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Hal Netkin. To be a gadfly activist is one of the finest expressions of our First Amendment, the right of freedom of speech which allows us to criticize our government leaders. But there are some members of this council that draw the line on free speech when they themselves are the ones criticized. I'm talking about my efforts to convince the council to seek the modification of Special Order 40, the LAPD mandate that does not allow it to turn over illegal alien gang members to the INS for deportation, going as far as to send Councilman Zain to Washington to lobby Congress to allow Los Angeles to remain a sanctuary for gang members. Unfortunately, my activism has somehow come to be labeled as racist and xenophobic by a few in this council and some directors of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. These people are intolerant of criticism, so let me clear up some of your misconceptions. Most Americans like myself like immigrants, even illegal immigrants. In fact, 12 years ago, I married an illegal immigrant from Mexico who is now a proud American citizen who cared for my mother who was suffering at the time with Alzheimer's disease. We have three adopted Latina daughters, and I have three brothers-in-law who are in the U.S. illegally. Obviously, I am not against illegal immigrants, but I am against the council virtually declaring Los Angeles a safe haven for illegal alien gang members. In spite of the fact that my wife had started the petitioning process for my brothers-in-law so that they could immigrate legally, they made the decision to illegally come to Los Angeles anyway. You see, my brothers-in-law found out through the virtual hotline that it is legal to be illegal in Los Angeles thanks to this council. My brothers-in-law certainly fit the profile of being honest, hard-working immigrants seeking a better life for their families and themselves, and I don't want them to be the subject of an LAPD witch hunt. But the LAPD has a don't ask, don't tell policy for illegal alien gang members. This council doesn't want to turn gang members over to the INS. Instead, it wants to protect them with Special Order 40 so they can hang out in our neighborhood. Without question, the vast majority of illegal immigrants are not a public safety threat to our city, but according to Sheriff Faca's own data, there are over 38,000 illegal alien inmates in county jail who should have been deported before they committed their crimes, not after. And the majority of the illegal alien inmates are gang members. This council's support for Special Order 40, matricular ID card, and driver's licenses for illegal immigrants virtually mandates Los Angeles as a sanctuary city, sending a message to foreign bad guys that if you come to Los Angeles, you can change our laws by breaking our laws. The community's opposition to Special Order 40 is not an immigration issue, it is a public safety issue, and since this council all but ignores mine and the community's legitimate concerns on this issue...
Mr. Netkin?
Yes.
It would help if you have your statement written down, you could submit it for the record, but we do have about 10 more speaker cards.
I only had one sentence left.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And since this council all but ignores mine and the community's legitimate concerns on this issue, I have launched a website to disseminate the truth to the people of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zain?
If I can respond to the previous speaker, I had a meeting with the previous speaker, Mr. Netkin, in my Valley office, and we discussed the issues of criminals who happen to be here illegally, and I informed Mr. Netkin that I would be working with this council where an individual is committing a crime, and that'd be a felony crime, and there was a conviction on a felony crime, that this council would be reviewing that aspect, but that we were not going to turn the Los Angeles Police Department into immigration enforcement officers as the bill in Congress is mandating. But I did have a personal meeting and discussed the issues in detail, and my staff is working to identify criminals who are committing criminal acts, and we are moving forward, and something will be generating from that information. So I just wanted to respond that we have listened to the concerns about people who are committing crimes in our community, in our City of Los Angeles, felony crimes who are involved in the criminal justice system. I wanted to clarify that for this body.
Thank you, Mr. Zain, Mr. Parks.
I just want to verify for those that are here and also the listening public on television, there is nothing in Special Order 40 that prevents officers from doing police work. Special Order 40 merely says that an officer should not ask a person for information about their status as it relates to them doing their job, but it also specifically states that if a person is involved in crime of high-grade misdemeanor or felony, the officers have an obligation to report that to INS. In 1968 or '70, the Sheriff's Department also included a new dimension, that every foreign-born arrestee is highlighted on the booking form, so if INS ever wants to make a check as to anyone that was arrested that's foreign-born, they have the resources, if they have the resource, they can do it. But there's absolutely nothing in Special Order 40 that prevents officers from doing work. And the other thing I think is important for all of us to realize is that police officers in LAPD, and what you'd want them to do is to be involved with incidents that involve crime. The fact that a person is a gang member and they're not involved in criminal activity does not allow the officers to violate their rights, just like they cannot violate any other right. And I think the strongest objection I've heard in the comments that were made earlier is that all illegal aliens, or most illegal aliens, are not gang members. And so I think it's important that the public hears what is accurate as opposed to hearing what appears to be a biased slant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Marty Takes?
Yes, thank you for coming to the Valley. Every time I go to a club or a bar here in L.A., I'm quite shocked about what the L.A. or the club owners get away with. You know what happens is that at 1:30, they call last call. Everybody rushes to the bar, they get their drink after having a couple of drinks, and at 2 o'clock, everybody's pushed out of the bar, there's nowhere to go. So of course, what everybody does, they go straight to their car, and they're driving. I don't know if you guys have ever been in a situation, you see how some of these people drive so erratically, they're on the freeways, driving with other people. Most of these people have no ambition, they're driving 90s, swerving in and out of lanes. So I was thinking is, is there any way there could be like some kind of initiative for at least like a one-hour grace period? You know, for these, I mean, these club owners make such a killing on these liquor sales, that maybe like for one hour extra, they can just have the music going or have the clubs or bars stay open, so people can talk, dance, you know, sober up. One hour can make a big difference. I mean, literally, it could probably save lives, you know, because I'd done it before when I had too much to drink. I would sit in my car, wake, because I'm not going to drive, and that one hour really helps, you become, you sober up. Because when you drive, you're putting other people, and you're drunk, you're putting other people's lives in danger, and that's what's going on. This happens every weekend. And another subject is, I'm happy to see all these new people here, I really feel good. I mean, I watch you guys a lot, and I really, I think the L.A., the future of L.A. looks quite good. Unfortunately, past leaderships, you know, I just, I, it's kind of sad to see like the way the river is, see Hollywood and the way downtown is, I mean, the buildings are beautiful, I mean, they were, and, you know, let's bring some pride back into the city. I mean, again, I love this city, and it's time for L.A. to become a city. You know, I plan to become a teacher here in L.A., and, you know, I know living in the Valley, becoming a teacher, I'm most likely not going to be able to buy a home, you know, but so there needs to be some kind of extra housing if we have to, we have to build up to be able to build for the population to grow. And another thing is, please support rail, such as the Expo. You know, I know you guys saw the picture, the LA Times today, that picture of the smog. I mean, our kids are breathing that stuff in, so it's time to find another alternative from getting to here to there. Thank you.
Thank you. We can never say often enough, don't drink and drive. Kenneth Schoenwald, Victoria Davidson-Castillo, and Jamie Cordero. Please proceed.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Kenneth Schoenwald. First of all, I would like to thank the city councils for bringing this session to the Valley so that the voice of the common man could be heard. Through the grace of God, I was fortunate enough to be born and raised in this country. Still, some things thoroughly confuse me about laws and government. Number one, the rent stabilization organization, which was a wonderful concept, but is becoming less important than it once was because many rental billings are not covered under this rule. Therefore, this lessens the power of the working family man who is a tenant. We allow taxpayer funds to subsidize building owners' purchases, but do little to govern the amount of rent they charge. I pray the council will look into these issues in future meetings pertaining to the housing regulations and governing rent increases. I would also like to thank, personally thank Councilman Cardenas, his office, especially Jim Dantona, who has helped me every step of the way with dealing with my problems with landlord and tenant problems. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, and I see you brought your son, will you? Thank you very much for including your family on this important evening. Victoria?
Thank you. Again, my name is Victoria Davidson Castillo. I spoke to you last week and asked you to keep your ears and eyes open to the issues that your neighborhood councils see with the departments throughout the city of Los Angeles. I wanted to say thank you for coming out to the Valley, again, for both the television and yourselves. We will be holding, hopefully, our first quorum meeting as installed members of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council right here in the Broad Center in Room 1B tomorrow evening at 7:00 P.M. Van Nuys is a very diverse area. From myself as a Native American woman, married to a Latino man who came here as an illegal immigrant, and in living in a community where I know many of my neighbors are illegal, that I feel comfortable enough and they feel comfortable enough to speak to our police department and not worry about their immigration status, makes me feel like we're able to keep our neighborhoods in a safer place. Regardless of whether or not we, many of our gang members may be illegal, the reality is not every gang member is an illegal, and not every illegal is a gang member. Also, I wanted to just remind you to keep your ears and eyes open to the issues of various neighborhood councils, because many of our council, neighborhood councils from the Valley to the West Side, down to the South Area, and out into the East Area of Los Angeles have some of the same issues, and to not lose our items and agendas and in bringing them up before your council, Ms. Hahn, especially in regards to a report from Dunn in regards to where we're going with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and any other issues such as office space, funding, and what the relationship between the neighborhood councils and the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment should be in the future. Thank you so much for your comments tonight, your time, and for visiting us here in the heart of the Valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, Victoria. Jamie Cordero here, some of, most of the board member or the council members know me. Thank you, Tony, for showing what and how beautiful Van Nuys is. I mean, it's a wonderful, Councilmember Misakowski, outstanding job on the Browdy Center. Congratulations, getting it done under budget for the most part. This is about community. That's why we're here. You're here within our community. We're here to share with you about our community. A couple of things. Victoria is a board of directors now with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. I also am a member of the board of directors. And we're 90% moving forward. We have that last 10% to go, and we've been fighting it with the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And what we're looking for is a change of staff for the Van Nuys to help represent the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council and assist us. So if the city council can hear what is being said here in the Valley as well as across the city, there needs to be some changes. We're almost there. Let's make a change staff. I'm not looking for anything, you know, anybody to be totally removed, you know, from the Dunn Department, but we're looking for a fresh face so that we can take it the next level, move 100% forward with community. And that's what we're here for. We're here to work within the community, and I thank you once again for coming to our beautiful revitalized community, and will continue to work. As you can tell, the city never sleeps. You hear a little noise in the background, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. The next speakers are Donna Schwam, Beverly Wiseman, and Eric Friedman. Or Friedner, excuse me.
Hi, I'm Donna Schwam. Whoa. So loud, it hurt my own ears. I'm here in Van Nuys and was raised here, and I find this evening so exciting to have you all here. The energy level was absolutely awesome, and I'm looking forward to more of these meetings here. It really makes me feel connected to the city, and I appreciate that very much. I have to say, however, that as soon as the issue came up with neighborhood councils, the energy seemed to drop to the floor. And I don't think it was just me. It appeared that it was going on through the rest of us that are still remaining. And I know it's a new program, however, if we could bring it to a little bit better place faster than four years now, it certainly would be a great feeling for all of us here. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much. Beverly Wiseman?
Thank you. My name is Beverly Wiseman. I'm a Van Nuys Neighborhood Council stakeholder.
Can you speak a little bit? There you go. Wonderful.
I'm a block captain for the, thank you, block captain for our neighborhood and 37-year resident here. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of my neighbors and myself for your participating tonight with us or encouraging us to be with you tonight. Many of my neighbors did come. They are very pleased with the fact that we are being noticed. We work hard. They're hard-working people. They're honest people and very much concerned with improving our neighborhood, and we're hoping that you continue to recognize us and know that we are dedicated to making Van Nuys a place that everybody will be proud of. And I thank you so much for coming. We truly mean that.
Thank you very much. Eric Friedner?
Good evening. I'm Eric Friedner from North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council and a stakeholder in Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. I would like to thank all of you for coming out here, visiting us in the Valley, but I feel rather ashamed, and I think I, I for one would like to apologize. We have this beautiful building that was built with millions of taxpayer dollars, and yet you're not meeting in it. You're meeting out here on the steps. And we have a man somewhere up there who's collecting public taxpayer money using his sandblaster, and none of the buddy here seems to have the power to tell him to turn it off for a few hours. And I can smell whatever the chemical is drifting over us. I hope it's not Proposition 65 material he's using. I hope the next time you come visit us, we can provide perhaps a much more formal and pleasant surrounding in which to welcome and greet you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last two speakers are Denny Fireball and Debbie Duval.
It is indeed a high honor to stand before so many distinguished individuals whom we respect. We know your job is tough, and you take a lot of flak. Chief Parks, my son thinks you're a knight in shining armor, and he would like to join at some point when he's an aspiring young man. Mr. Parks, the Los Angeles Police Department, because of the recognition that a lot of times they do not receive. My son, if these gentlemen, these officers were on baseball cards, would collect them all if they are truly his heroes, and to see Chief Parks, Councilman Parks here is indeed a true honor for my son.
Thank you very much. How you doing? I gave him a business card earlier, and I told him one message, do everything your dad says. Can you talk to my kids? Thank you very much. Actually, I kind of like it outside tonight. You can see Mars here someplace. On a more serious note, I am a stakeholder in Lake Balboa, West Van Nuys, and I'm also a stakeholder in the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council as well. There's a big difference between serving the public and a big difference between interfering and manipulating and controlling, and that organization is Dunn, the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. By virtue that its name is an oxymoron, government should not empower the people. The people should empower the government. They've got it backwards. And Dunn should get the message that the stakeholder is who is empowered, and they should be there to assist and to help and to answer questions, not suborn, not manipulate, not interfere. If these people in this department are truly service-oriented, and again, going back to the wonderful motto on the side of our black and whites, to protect and serve, maybe they should take a lesson from that. And you, our distinguished members of the city council, are empowered by the people. And gosh, we would really like to have your help. We need it, because we ain't getting the job accomplished. Thank you. Thank you very much, and once again, thank you for bringing your family with you. Our last speaker, Debbie Duval.
Hi, I'm Debbie Duval. I'm a Van Nuys Neighborhood Council stakeholder, lifelong resident, and I'd like to welcome you and thank you for coming to Van Nuys, the heart of the Valley. I very much appreciated your comments, Ms. Hahn, about Dunn being in an assisting role. We've experienced much hindrance, to put it politely, from Dunn. So I hope that in the future, they will be able to help us and not deter us. Also, I'm a member of the Delano Park Advisory Board, and as such, I want to say that we are proud that we are going to have groundbreaking on October 4th for the Cindy Misakowski Delano Recreation Center building that is finally happening thanks to Ms. Misakowski's hard work and Mr. Cardenas' final input. It's quite appropriate that tonight you decided to recognize state and federal legislators who are helping our city, because that is exactly what Tony did for us, getting the final money for Delano Park. So thank you, and come again, hopefully, when construction is finished.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment. At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to once again thank all of the good people who made this evening a success, and certainly to my colleagues who came out tonight to the San Fernando Valley to welcome our community and to listen to our community. But most importantly, I'd like to thank all of you, the community members, for your participation, and thank you to the San Fernando Valley residents for speaking out tonight. I love this country, this country with freedom, this country that allows everyone to have a voice and to agree and to disagree, and most importantly, to listen and learn from one another. Do we have any announcements?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Just before the posting and referrals, I just want to thank the council member for this area, Tony Cardenas, who I think is doing an extraordinary job. I know his staff worked very hard on this. It's very difficult to put this together, and the city staff that made this possible. My grandparents lived many years right here on Hart Street, and I think Van Nuys is lucky to have a representative like this, and I want to thank you for making this such a successful meeting. Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
There's a group of folks in the back that are televising this broadcast live, and I want to acknowledge them. I just passed the door, and they're in there making sure this broadcast goes out for the viewers on our station, so I just want to pass our appreciation on to the folks behind the scene that are doing this broadcast tonight. Thank you. All the camera folks, the audio people, thank you all. Add, just wanted to add to the fact that all these city workers, they still have three to four hours of cleanup, tearing down the cables, tearing down all the TV equipment. They still have three to four more hours ahead of them, and then they're on to Cleveland, Ohio, to the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. There you go.
Mr. Laban?
I'm talking on Wendy's microphone right now. I want to thank the Department of Water and Power for the great water that they give us, the great water that comes through this great San Fernando Valley and feeds the pueblo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mahalan.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Any adjourning motions? Seeing none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcia, Gruel, Han, Laban, Ledlo, Misakowski, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Zine, Tadez, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all very, very much. This meeting is adjourned.